Okay, time is Thursday, September 14th at 6:32. Call the meeting to order. The only trustees we are missing tonight are Kelly Stein and Ryan Johnson. Rest in full attendance. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no one here for the comment or input? I don't think so, right? Make a motion to consent the agenda?
I move to consent the agenda.
Second, a second? Okay, first may I trusty Ingle, second by trustee Stevie? We will wait and see if the sheriff shows up to make a report. And then I'll start with my notes. So a couple things, first of all, I had an RCICC meeting, which is when all the groups get together, the mayors, presidents, everyone gets together right at the end of August. It was, these meetings, I think Ernie and Chris had mentioned before, when Ernie was the former president, how great they are. They are really, really informative. We have such a small village, some of it doesn't always apply to us. But two things I thought, well, there were a couple things that I took away. One being this cyber security consortium. And I don't know if that really applies to us, but I'd look into it with you, Kendall, to see if it applies to us at all, just in keeping things safe in the village for like our finances and everything. I don't, we have such a small space. But also, one other big thing that came up was VRBO and rentals, where people take their properties and turn them into rentals for travel. And people in larger municipalities are upset because then people rent out their homes and then they have parties. And it's just becoming more, it's happening a lot more. And one thing they brought up was you can actually get paid from VRBO. You can get tax money from that if somebody does turn it into a rental. But also, the health department came and did a whole presentation on how if there are any VRBO properties or, you know, anything that's not just VRBO, but anything that's a short-term vacation rental in our area, the health department should come and make inspections to make sure it's being properly run. And they have to go through a whole bunch of things. I know, talking to a resident, Jen Hinkle, there was one possible vacation home that was, how soon would we turn it into a vacation home? And I guess one advantage we have is we are such a small village. We kind of know when that happens. So just to keep people apprised and let them know that they have to go through the proper channels if they do decide to turn their home into a vacation rental.
Is that just with VRBO?
It's any-
Yeah, but do they have to contact, they have to set proper channels? Do they have to just go through whoever might be renting it? You know, that organization?
No, it can be any, it can be any organization. It was just, they started with VRBO because it's, you know, they're kind of using that as an umbrella.
Right, and do they have to contact the village and let them know that they're doing-
They don't, but if we know, like, I do know of one that maybe turned into a vacation home, we can contact them and we can also let the health department know. But they're also doing a nice job of, there's something they can buy, the health department can buy, that shows what homes are being used for things like that, where they can get from all sorts of different, all of those different places where you can rent, and they can get a list and then they can sort it out that way, the health department, which would be really good. So just, just so you're aware, I thought that was, that was probably one of the most interesting parts of the meeting for us. The other thing that came up was Pastor Hargrove actually did a presentation, which was nice. He's working with a group that did something about, just, this is just really just for you to know, in our community, there's a group of people that are putting together something regarding Underground Railroad in the Racine Community, and it's out past the eye. There's a presentation on Sunday, the 24th, and they have all these markers that are taking place in Union Grove where they found where the Underground Railroad had been. And I just thought it was really interesting and I just wanted to share it. It was just really informative. So if you'd like to know more, let me know and I'll see if I can send you some more information.
I would like more.
For, I actually brought up for education purposes, they need to let teachers know that this is a thing. So it looks pretty awesome. I attempted to talk to Greg Tally about the little library. I've not heard if it's done yet. My goal was that he had it done by the middle of September. So I'm going to call him, I know he just had surgery recently, but he's going to try and get it done, get part of it done. And then it'll let Linda to be painted and then we'll put it in. But I'd like to get it in before it gets too cold. That's my biggest concern. So I'll be on Greg Tally.
I'll save a hole.
Yeah. And then Laura, do you, can I, can you, when it's your turn, can you just talk about the park and the garden? Would you mind doing that? Because you know a little bit more. Okay. And then two other things on my list. Nick Haas did remove his tree. But he did leave quite a mess for Michelle Jess.
I know her over there. It's, it's-
Yeah, I felt really bad for her. But as I talked to our attorney and I talked to Ernie, it did become kind of a civil issue and now there's really nothing we can do. He just decided to leave it all over her property. I think that-
Where is it?
It's on, she's on Green Meadow Lane and he's on his house faces later. And so it was his backyard and her backyard, Kendall. And so she, I haven't talked to her since, but I did go over there and look at it and tried to help, but there was really nothing I could do at that point. It's just kind of a sad situation. But at least it's got down now and it won't ruin her house, but whatever. And then finally, my last piece, I just need your advice. This is nothing we can really vote on because it's not, I guess we could vote on it and if you want to table it, I'll bring it back and we can vote on it next month. But this was brought up. Dennisoff, who you know helps with the car show, he always gets dash flags for the car show, which are like little souvenirs that whenever anybody registers, they get one. I've always mentioned that he needed to get reimbursed for those because he would pay for them. He just informed me last week that he had saved receipts from years past that he had not gotten reimbursed for. So he has receipts from 2018, 2019, we had no car show in 2020, 2021, and 2022. And he's like, sorry, I need to get reimbursed for these. And I told him that really you can't get reimbursed for something if it's not within that fiscal year. And in some cases, it's 30 days or 60 days or 90 days and not past that. I told him I would bring it to the board. I talked to Kendall about it. It totals out at just under $1,000. I would like to hear your input on what we would like to do with this. I told him maybe the board would approve half, maybe you would approve last year and that is it, maybe you would approve nothing. I did not promise him anything. I basically told him that it was on him that he didn't get this reimbursed. This is not on us. This was, I specifically remember telling him last year, he had to bring this to Chris and he just didn't. And now he's sat on four receipts. This came up because we just paid for the dash flags out of our budget because he didn't want to pay for them, which I can understand, but he should have done that all along. So would you like to vote on this next month? Would you like to just make a decision now? Because it is under $5,000, so we could, what are your thoughts? Yeah, that's exactly how my thoughts. Would you like me to put it on the agenda for next month? Okay, let's put on the agenda for next month.
Let him know this month.
Just letting you know, and I will just let him know that we're discussing again next month because we needed to bring it to a vote. That sounds great. Okay, thank you. I apologize, it was literally, it was like, what?
Was he supposed to be turning those things?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
And you just didn't do it?
Correct. And I did tell him he might just be out.
Okay.
So, and Cindy realizes he may just be out. But you can't hold out receipts for four years. I told him in my place of work, if I buy something for school, school's not going to reimburse me four years later. By the way, so we will hold off on it. Thank you for listening, I just wanted to bring that up. And that was really kind of like, what do I do with this one? Okay, trustee Ingle, do you have anything to report?
Just, there's a complaint about weeds southeast corner of Taylor later. I drove over there. I don't know what to say about it. Are they weeds? Yeah, I guess you could say that. Are they tall? Yeah, pretty much. But I don't know what to say. It, it, it's been there, it's, that house has had those plants growing in it forever. And, I mean, I never noticed it personally, driving, I drive by, pass it all the time. And it's not like I look and say, oh my God, those are terrible. It kind of blends in. That's my comment.
All right. Do you think we should send her a letter?
We could send her a letter and just say, hey man, we're getting complaints about, you know, your front yard.
I think some of it is tall grass.
Well, I know, I have a previous owner, I actually knew her because I go to her house and get plants. She spooked them, she fucker of them. And she had said that she had complaints when she owned it, that it was looking unkept, but she liked the freshness of it. So it's a personal preference on her end, but there's new owners and they're, now they've been there a year or two.
And I don't know what constitutes weeds because I specifically saw like Queen Anthe's lace. That's a prairie grass, that's a prairie plant. You know, it's a native plant to here. Maybe she likes Queen Anthe's lace and those other plants. Or here, I don't know. But yeah, but-
But it's not vandalized, it's not-
It's not vandalized or anything like that. It's, you know, I don't know if they were purposely planted or not, but the other thing is the, the actual grass is long. So, how long? I don't know, I didn't measure it, but it could use a moment.
Okay, okay.
Do you have the address?
Oh, hang on.
It's directly across from B B school.
Yeah.
Okay, sort of picture. Okay, trustee Johnson, excuse, trustee Ruth?
I just wanted to update the board on what's going on with the butterfly garden at the new park. We have some families, some kids in the neighborhood that want to put in a butterfly garden for the new park. And I thought, oh, this is a really nice idea. They've agreed to keep it up and take care of it. And so we had a bunch of rocks underneath, it's going to be underneath where they have the warming shed, Mr. Kaiser. And I don't know why, but there's a lot of rocks underneath it. So we have to get a contractor to come in with-
A bobcat.
A bobcats. I didn't know what it's called. And he's got to dig them up and get them all out. And then when they do that, we have a contractor who's actually said they'll do it for free. And so that was really much appreciated. And I talked to Ally about it and I said, maybe we should put a mention of that in the September newsletter. And she's, you know, looking at that. So anyway, he's going to dig that all out. Then we have to get some dirt to put in there because, just to make it level. I don't know where we're going to get that. I can talk to Matt, contractor.
And the kids have, so the kids that are doing this is the monarch, the monarch?
Little fires.
Yeah. They have over $200 saved up. And so they're planning on using that towards anything that they need. And they've been walking dogs and picking up weeds and-
Well, that's really handy.
So, yeah.
Yeah. So then we're going to have, there's another person that has volunteered to roam till it. And I said, well, it's going to be a kid's butterfly garden. And he says, well, I have about $40 worth of credits and donors. And they can use that money to buy plants that are good for butterflies. So he said he would donate that and, but he'd like to come and be with the kids when they're planting them, so that he can kind of, he's a big planter, big gardener. So he said he'd like to do that. And I said, well, we'd have to check with the parents to see that there'd be a problem with that. And we're just waiting for Matt with Cornerstone Landscaping to come in and dig them out. He's been kind of busy, he's short on staff. He said, well, let us know when it's done, then we can get the dirt in and the tilling. And hopefully get it in before the end of the year.
Yeah, he's a great guy. He was our, like, former neighbor before I lived here. Yeah, the kids are excited about it. And Michelle Armstrong will help oversee that as well because she's been pretty involved in that. Okay, trustee Stein, excuse, trustee Stevie?
Wrapping up the summer events, we're going to have our car show on the 30th. It's $10 per car. I've been too involved with planning this year, but hopefully we have great weather. And if you see any social media about it, be sure to share and tell everybody to come. Hopefully we have a good turnout.
Yes, and I'm hoping that I can contact my maintenance guys for the sign.
For what?
The car show.
The banner.
Oh, the banner, huh?
Yeah.
I'm figuring it out.
Yes, we do have it, I think it's in the office, maybe? It's not back there.
I'm in the same area.
It's not in the office, okay. Then I think, I think it's back in the office. I'll grab it today.
I think it's in the garage.
Oh, is it in the garage by you? Okay, we're finding it because last year it chipped us until a day before the car show to find it and it was in Dennis's garage. Trustee Winnick?
I don't really have anything. I still have the signs to get back for the Toonson table.
Okay.
They're in my trunk.
Awesome, okay.
But I just dropped those off at the office.
Yeah, that'll be great. Administrator Shaw?
Okay, so two things here. So the shoe we were having behind the blue kangaroo. So most of it is picked up and it's cleaned really nice. There's no burning trash back there. I don't think we should get any more trash back there since we moved those garbage cans, but we still have that grease trap. So we, first Ally went over and talked to the China House and the owner and the company saying that it's not there because they're not following up. And we found out that was their house.
And we thought the China House was closed. And then I drove by and I'm like, it's not closed! They're still open!
Yeah. They're hiding it.
It's open! They're like, we've never been closed? I'm like, are you sure?
Yeah, and it's still locked, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a really heavy thing, it's not something you can like just move. So I did talk with John Disposal, so they were supposed to take it out on Monday. But I'm going to work to try and get it moved out. It won't be like a typical move. So that's just the last thing back there. The homeless man, he wasn't able to go to the handle, so it was nice. And that area that was fenced in back there, it actually moved it too, so.
It's looking pretty good.
Yeah.
But you have to keep reminding now.
Yeah.
For sure.
We're resolved that, that since the big dumpster was moved, that you can keep people kind of with you there because that attracts people when you have those green, which is like-
And there are two that, but they belong to the blue kangaroo and Dollar Tree, but they're on their back end. They're not by our fence anymore.
Yeah, that's where they're at.
Yes.
I'll pull this up from there.
No. And I'm just going to ask, do you think we should put a sign up? That says, no.
You answer me?
Yes.
I don't know, sometimes you have too many signs.
Okay, I just wondered, okay.
I noticed a lot of signs too back there.
Yeah, so.
And then I brought up employee of Harold's time too. I did print out some things on Amazon, two or three of them. I passed this around. They're like shirts, like button-ups. They had a lot of variety of shirts. So just maybe get something like Emma Park on there so like when we have events, we can kind of wear shirts and things. Just an idea. And it's a lot of different options, so that's just an example. They were really affordable, like $12 to like $50. So I think it would be nice to have more of these shirts.
That's great.
I love that idea. I do.
And we can talk more about it, I can come up with more options. So I just wanted to bring an example along because it's quite affordable.
Okay.
And then I got a few complaints too. A lot of complaints about parking, like people parking in the grass and then on the street. So I'm going to put that in the newsletter and then I'm going to put the weed issue there too because that's something we continuously have. We probably have that until December when the next newsletter comes out, so. And then I did get a complaint about dogs in the park. So some of it we never really discussed. But I, I was kind of upset saying a dog shouldn't be over there. There's kids and there's dogs running around, which could be a kind of an issue. It was like a decent case.
Were they leash?
Yes.
Wait, I do remember talking about that and trying to say, yeah. And I think we decided to keep it off the rule sign because-
Yeah, this is kind of made possibly tight because I was walking my dog and it just, just, and went around a corner and there were three dogs in there. None of them leashed. And they ran up to my dog and of course, he didn't like that. So I don't know, maybe a reminder to keep your dogs leashed or something, I don't know.
Okay.
So we need to keep, we'll let them come to the park if they have them?
I don't think we need to mention on like, dogs are welcome, but I don't, we didn't put it on the sign. I think we just have to remind people, like, if your dogs are out, they have to be leashed.
You're representing.
And I'd agree, like a sheet with some of the main issues we've been having too, I'm going to put those in the boarders.
Yeah.
So.
Because, I mean, I can see myself walking by, going over, sitting on a bench in the park for a little bit. But not a leash. Done.
Okay, so I'll put that in the reminder with the weeds and then just people parking is what they do. And then I'm doing the fall newsletter with Ally and I was just wondering, is there going to be a turkey trot? Because I was putting bits and different things in. I know that was mentioned before.
I think, yeah. Okay. Give me some details. What do you want me to say? At what time? And I'm assuming on Thanksgiving, so just send us one now. And some logistics. And it can be super simple. And you can always ask Kendall because she's the one that brought it up first. Does Kendall say she shares?
Is there any other ideas that anyone has for a business letter going on?
We have a Christmas party and there are-
Oh, but I didn't connect, yeah.
And then this year we're going to be, because we discussed it last year, providing the main dash.
Oh, yeah.
It sounds like masochically or something like that. Because it seemed to be a little lacking, it was just like snack. It was nearly like a stack just like down here on the hill or anywhere. So we might do it down here in the gym and stuff, right?
You could talk about that.
So down in the gym?
Just those little ones. And what's, what's that, the answer now?
I just want to let you know the after-hunter and the $90 left in your events budget.
Okay. I suppose she'll like to cheat.
They'll all put a little money in.
Turkey trot sounds good too.
Yeah.
And then for the air conditioner in building four that was repaired, so now we're down to eight air conditioners for like playing over the next ten years. So now we're going to be doing like one at a time or they go out, but two, two down. Eight to go and then in building three, it was fixed. So it just wasn't replaced, but-
Building four. Building four.
Building four.
Yes.
And then today, we did have a prospective tenant come in. He wants to rent out that space in building two to B where constant, constant retirement was previously. So he wants to rent that space along with the basement space. So like three spaces, so I'm in the process of doing that, so I'm excited about it. Because that would be like three spaces, but we'll have to like combine it and come up with a lease. But I made a first. So I'll follow with him next week. And then coming up with the bid for the windows, that'll be mid-October. And talking to Chris, he let us know that, you know, last time there wasn't much response when it was not, so his advice is to put the bid out, then wait to see their response, then follow up with different contractors, but to know there is a bid out there. So then we can get more success this time around. So kind of just reaching out, you know, a little more work to get people to get a contractor in the first group. And that's pretty much my report.
Okay.
I have a question. What happened with the person that had the car on their lot with the white wheels and the-
Like, yes, take care of it.
Okay, that's good. And then could I just ask again if you call a county and let them know that they have to cut that section?
I keep forgetting, I keep forgetting, talking to her about that too. Where, is it by, is it just past like-
You know, the Pyrex?
Yes, it's right there.
Right, it's, it's from where that-
And you want them to cut the grass or they, with the street sweeper?
No, they have, there's that little like easement where they have like, where you, where you have the, there's grass in between.
So in between the blue kangaroo and where the, I mean, after CBS?
It's south of CBS. So right where-
Yes.
Where that driveway?
There's like that, that lot, lot of layout.
Right, and then there's that driveway that goes back into-
That where she's been, we've been cleaning it up.
Right, and then it's right up to May's house.
Okay.
And it's just that little section between the street and the fence.
But is it street sweeping or is it a like lawn?
Cutting the weeds.
Okay, all right.
They have to do that a couple times a year.
Yes, I couldn't remember if it was a street sweep, I thought it was a street sweeper.
No, no, they just have to cut that little section between Pyrex and the street.
Okay, all right. So right on the-
That's a county.
Okay.
Part right there, okay.
I keep meaning to ask you that because I was like, I know I forgot something over here and I don't know where Laura's talking. I'm going to add on to a comment that came in. And I lost my train of thought and I don't want to, yeah. It had something to do with, oh, I just want to bring this up. We do have a rental coming in and Kendall, I'm just going to bring it up so everybody's aware so I don't get upset and annoyed. We have a rental coming in and there's a gun show that wanted to rent the gym for two days, Kendall? And it was like they would be paying $800-ish, but they have everything. Kendall went to check to make sure they had everything, all the proper channels, all the insurance papers. We'll let the sheriff and the police department know. Fountain Hall does this often. I talked to Kendall about it and we actually, I talked to both Chris and Ernie about it just because it was something that came to my attention that I'd never had to deal with before. And I was like, how, I didn't know how residents would feel. But it's also something that does bring money into the village and I don't, I, it seems very safe. And I just wanted to let you know. If you have questions or concerns, I'd ask you that, if there's anything you want to-
Are they going to put those huge signs out front that they usually do at gun shows? That would be my biggest concern because-
I would agree with that. They're kind of gaudy.
They are gaudy, they do it out in Kansasville and it started downstairs on this trailer.
Fountain Hall too.
Yes, and it's just exceptionally tacky. I mean, advertising's great, I love that, but it's a bit much, so.
I don't know.
If there's something to talk about, we know they had scaled down version of advertising.
I would totally agree with you.
Because we're within the village versus a main highway.
Yes, true.
You know?
That's a really good point.
That's why I brought it up. I was like, I don't know what to do with this one, Kendall. We brought it up last week and she's like, how are you, what do you mean? What are you, and I just, I do think that that's something you could bring up. Is, we are a neighborhood, we're not a major highway. And so can we just tone it down a little bit?
Just what you're great gracious and minimal with advertising.
Good point, Linda. Anything else? I know, see? I'll think of it. Okay. Kendall, has that been taken care of? Like, is that rental in place?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Let's ask, um, who's this new rental? I mean, is it prospective tenant or?
Do we know the name?
Um. What kind of business would it be?
A church.
A church?
Yes, church in Kenosha. So he's been in his places for ten years and, uh, due to COVID, he had like downsized. So then he said he is a little unorganized there, so he really liked the space because he said his clients have to walk through or visitors have to walk through his office. So he wants like separated where he has his, you know, administrative office. He wants that church upstairs and then like a kitchen area where they eat and things like that. That was a dumpster.
And that's, um, in building two?
Yes.
Okay, so then what happened with that, um, music therapy group?
She's in the front.
She's in the front, okay. So that's working out with.
So far I've not heard anything and I'm not calling over there to ask. I don't want to open a can of worms and have them know. I've, I've seen her since and she said everything's been fine. And Shell?
Shell.
Has not called or contacted me at all about anything.
Alright.
So I think it's fine, okay.
Okay, so then this new person would be going into the office that.
Harmonia's beginnings used to be in.
Okay, alright, and then they're gonna have his office and then the service downstairs.
Um, he said he wanted to do the, the services upstairs where it's carpeted and then downstairs to have like a, everywhere he would default shit.
What if you do the services upstairs?
I have to look at the building.
That door corner, it's a long rectangular.
Yeah, and he says he had about twenty-five to fifty people in his congregation, so it was kind of small.
Okay.
Yeah, and then he said Sundays only and he might try to introduce Wednesdays again, but he basically wouldn't be here like during the day, during the week.
Okay, well, thank you. That's good. Okay. If that's all, then that's good on your business. Um, a discussion of possible approval of new backboards in building three, um, in the gym. Let me just share a couple insights. I, if you heard me at the beginning, I was talking about, um, Prairie's actually getting rid of all their backboards and they said if we wanted them, we could take them, but Kurt said they will not support downstairs, so that was a free option. Um, I talked to TJ Hearn because he rents a lot from the gym and does a lot of basketball practices here. Um, he's our P E teacher. He actually worked for Evergreen. Um, Tom used to be one of our maintenance guys for his dad. Um, and he brought to me, he said, are you guys still gonna do the backboards? What are you thinking? Um, he said, because another option would be you could not do the backboard, you could not do like a, you know, one that's from the ceiling. We're actually doing this at Prairie as well. We're getting like the ones that are like roll away, but they're heavy enough that you couldn't dunk on them, but you could at least put them away for pickleball and soccer.
You still can play pickle.
Right, but they were cheaper. They're only two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for a set of two versus putting in brand new ones for four thousand. So I guess that's my thought is, do you like that one option better than the other? Um, I don't know.
I would say to, to ask the people that are gonna be using it the most. I really don't care one way or the other. I think it's based on what's gonna give us more sales.
Yes, I agree.
Because how easy is it to move them? Because that's.
You're asking somebody.
Well, either, so I have one in my front driveway here.
I think they're.
And it takes two of us to put it.
I think it probably would take more than one person, for sure.
Yeah.
Um.
And they put he backwards?
I'll show you the picture. He sent me some pictures today and then I meant to, was handing them to disaster after school.
You said Prairie is going to the, to the.
We are apparently using some of these. I don't know like all the time if we're.
Okay.
That surprised me, but I was like, oh, interesting.
I think she's using them for practice. You know, if you have two, three, four, or whatever you have here, you know, this group of kids practicing free throws, this kid group doing layups and or something like that.
Yeah.
So this is what they look like.
Why is Prairie thinking about changing their?
I don't know. I don't know if they're doing that for all of them or just part of them.
Or they're just.
TJ just told me that we were gonna switch some things out and this is what, something we're gonna go to. But I guess what they were looking at was like an MBA style. It's similar to what the MBA probably uses.
It's pretty obvious.
I think it's probably because they're tired of going up and down. I mean, they have to move them up and move them down, move them up and move them down. But they were like, we're getting, so I don't know if they're doing that. I mean, we have a lot of games in our gym sometimes, like we'll have four to six games. I don't know how many, um.
You might have a lot of.
With, with younger, younger kids.
Where, where do you put them? No, they're not being.
He said he could put them in the corner.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So, um, he just wanted me to bring it up. He actually said, he's like, I would, he would have come tonight, um, but he had commitments with kids. He said, do you want me to come? I'm sure I can. Though I've got to take my son to basketball or something. So I said it was fine. Um, so I guess I just want to know, I know I can approve this if it's under five thousand. Um, I guess it's more just what, what rub do you guys want to go? Um, and we heard from Josh, Josh Hess at all. So Josh Hess was gonna give us a thousand dollars towards this and now I think it's kind of fallen by the wayside, um, Tom Bill's grandson. So I think that's probably money, but we do have money that we had set aside, um, from previous administration that you were moving over, correct? Did you say there was like an extra six thousand that we didn't use anywhere?
Um, I wouldn't say that anymore, only because there's gonna be a lot of budget transfers next month.
Okay.
Because of the excess road repairs we had.
So she changed your mind on me. Didn't tell me until just now. No, that's okay. So, um, Kendall, do we still have this in the budget though that we could, we could still approve this?
I would want to wait one month to see. I've got a budget.
Until I put the budget stock.
On the agenda.
Okay.
See where our money is.
Okay.
Just because it's getting to the end of the year and a lot of the lines are becoming a hundred percent, a hundred percent, and things are going over and we're having to move things around.
Okay, so Chris is going to come down and work with Kendall and Lassiteria another time, because this is the first time that they're moving the budget without Chris. And he has timings on here to come now, and we might give him a little bit of stipend like we did last time, just to help out. Um, Lassiteria also would really appreciate that. We have to remember, she's very similar to where Chris was five years ago. Um, and she's learning a lot and you're doing a great job. Um, so with that being said, since we're not gonna really decide, and I would like to purchase these soon, sooner rather than later, but if we can't purchase them until, you're thinking October, Kendall?
I'm thinking not to make a decision until we move the budget lines around in October.
Okay.
To see where our money is and where it's going.
And does basketball start on time?
You don't like what I did? The.
The roadway?
You would rather have the ones that come down. That's fine. Or.
No, I, I don't, I see it being in the way more than.
More than.
And it's gonna be heavy and usually it's just one guy, one day.
Well, and I think TJ was just thinking, could I save, could I save towards twenty? That's really.
Yeah.
I like the idea of just mowing it up, you know, the trees up the whole floor.
That's what I think towards as well.
Okay.
That's why you were talking.
Is everybody kind of on the same?
Baskets, there's six baskets down there.
Oh, there are?
Yes.
Oh, that's fine.
We're probably only gonna do.
You're only gonna do the two, but there's four.
Oh.
Fixed on the wall and they're ten foot and so, you know, you can have four different groups.
That's fine.
And then you got your main, so there's plenty of baskets down there.
Let's, um, is everybody in agreement then that you do not like the portable?
Yes.
You like the, the glass backboard? Okay, um, then we're just gonna let that sit until October.
Sure, we've got the money situation.
When does basketball season start? Like, when does it pick up down there?
November.
Yes.
My, my first rentals are coming in the middle of October right now.
And you also got soccer in these baskets, these.
Would be in a big, yeah, yeah, I agree. It was just an idea. It just came in some money.
I'm glad I heard you hear.
It just came in like that, so what do you think about this? I just want to bring this up.
Our gym has become, on a percentage level, more.
Soccer?
Um, profitable than the hall in a way.
Cool.
When it comes to the budget that was set for twenty twenty-three, we have surpassed the gym and then the hall's kind of sitting at like sixty percent of what the proposed income would be.
Okay.
It's definitely picked up speed with the amount of rentals that had been coming in the last two years for the gym. It's word of mouth, people finding out that, oh, their team practices there and their team and so, and I suppose it will fill up. I already have, had me to tell people, no, it's already booked.
Yeah.
I think two combination. Change the combination down there a lot.
Yeah.
If, if we look at the, um, the, the, what do you call this? Backboard? Bad, bad thinking. If we look at buying from whatever. If we look at buying new ones as a capital investment, as opposed to just an expense, I mean, maybe.
They're, they're metal backboards right now.
Yeah.
The balls are doing it hard.
Yeah.
And the glass is a lot more forgiving on the balls. It's a truer bounce.
Okay.
And that's why, especially, not so much the little kids, but the bigger guys, they.
And that's what they play their games on.
Well, yes, but actually the ones that, that we're looking to buy are not the big square ones. Those are, that thing is about ten brick.
Okay.
So we don't want to really do that, um, you know, so these are just basically the same size as one there, but they're, but they're glass.
Yeah.
Acrylic and it's a lot softer bounce.
Better to play with.
Yeah.
Or ricochet through the wall.
Yes, I know.
And you won't get that big clang.
Yeah.
With the glass, like if you're in here practicing down there, you hear that banging, that's, that's the metal, so.
Is it worth all right, just scheduling the five thousand dollar new backboards and if we do happen to go over that we just borrowed the five thousand from our savings? Is it worth that to get it done before the season starts?
Not a bad thing to ask because I do think that we should.
I have that money.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't know how much money we're gonna need for the next three months.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, so I haven't been here long enough to get a deal for it. I can see what the budget says, but the budgets, those are all guessing.
I don't think it's a super long time to get a deal either.
I can call.
Okay, why don't Kurt, can I ask you, can you call?
Yeah, I'll call him. I'll find out.
Based on how long it takes.
Six weeks, eight weeks, whatever.
Yeah, because I, I, that's my biggest.
But it's a one day, it's a one day turnover, I mean, it wasn't bad.
I'd, I just, I would love to get them in there during basketball season rather than putting it off and on some of January, because it's already been installed yet.
So if you want me to call, if I ask you, you want me to call it, um, let's go.
Can we hear if I have a quote still after it?
Well, I bet you it's off. What was it, forty-two hundred?
An official document that's like.
I can ask them what, what it's today costs.
Okay.
You know.
Let's do that and let's try to make, and then we can talk.
I can.
And are you seeing when it could be, or looking next week?
I got a feeling it won't take long, but, you know, it's a one day shot, so.
Okay, alright, so that's what we'll do and I guess we'll just let you know at the next board meeting because that's when I can approve unless it's over five thousand and then I'm like, well, now we're screwed next. Special meeting, talking about backboards.
Um, I kind of like Kendall's like nine oh two, it's just kind of like, let's, let's just kind of move it because it's coming, you know.
These baskets.
I know, I'm getting very worried. It's already September. I wanted this done in August, so I do feel like we need to, um.
We just kind of say, okay, let's look at the savings possibly and, you know, fill it in. I know what you're saying. So at the end of the year, there is all kinds of like, ooh, I move this, move this, do that type of thing, but I'm just kind of worried that, oh, okay, we're ready to go in October, well, they won't be able to be put up until the end of December.
Yeah, you could, let's, let's talk, let's see if we can get them, if we can sign this meeting. Because I think we're gonna do it regardless.
Yeah.
Um, so. Yeah. Okay.
And I, and we're talking about a request at B B School. And that's, we had talked about that, um, and I kind of used, well, you guys are only in here for a year. And how they came up and they go, well, we're in here for twenty twenty-five. And again, and she said twenty twenty-five, and they're young. So she, uh, emptying about their fencing, that's eleven hundred dollars, I, I don't know if that's.
We're not paying for it, sure. They're paying for sure. So you're telling me you want?
I, I don't want, but I mean, that's what they.
So I bring y'all up to speed, B B School, I'll go back to my president's notes for a second. B B School has a fence, the kids line it against, it's kind of falling down. They wanted it fixed, they wanted a new fence, but they're there. First time I talked, both of us were like, the fence isn't really doing much. Let's just take the fence out, like why do we have to, they like to line up there. I don't understand. I'm a teacher. I can find the places.
Yeah, totally.
Um, they did sign a contract with Lassiteria and they did go through this year and next year, which is great for us. Um, I just don't know if I want to spend eleven hundred dollars on fence and stuff. Um.
I, oh, for the tour, I just want to speak.
Thoughts? Do you want? I've got to go back and buy the fence.
Spend the fence for probably four bucks. Let that bang up for four bucks.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, why aren't we even seeing money in something that may be and may also not have to serve any purpose if they're not there anymore, like.
But what, what do you expect of this?
That's, I just said, can we just take it out?
I'm probably good.
Right, so.
It's not like a five-year-old runway to start.
No, and it's not, it's not containing kids at all.
It's not for my safety.
It's not on the roadway. It's like just part of the middle, yeah, so. You could just offer and just say, you know, we're not gonna replace it, but if you'd like us to take it out, we can take it or move it. I don't know how much of a pain that is, but. Okay, moving on, last item, uh, is discussion approval of new twenty twenty-four Saint John Sheriff's contract. Um, have you guys had a chance to look at the contract?
I think it's a little bit confusing because I, I've talked to Kendall about it and I've been on the road for a long time. Looking at this, it's a lot, it's a monthly cost, two hundred fifty dollars. And so I had thought about it and when we get the sheriff's report, they say we spend so many hours and the cost lifts, you know. So I'm thinking, oh my God, this could be two hundred fifty dollars every month, but basically it's not like that. Kendall explained that she pays as a leader every year three thousand dollars and then they take care of that in a year. That's where I guess I was concerned.
Okay.
If they're only working two, three hours, why are we paying them two hundred fifty dollars for a month? But it's just kind of a whole year.
Is this what it was last year? It's the same, okay. And we didn't serve us what we gave them, so this is like three thousand dollars they pulled from that for a year. And if there's anything left over, maybe.
Yeah, there's no, nothing in contract over here, it's just a contract, a new set for the year.
Any other questions? I wish we could come to a meeting once in a while.
Good.
Sure.
I would too. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the new twenty twenty-four Saint John Sheriff's contract.
I want a motion to approve the new twenty twenty-four Saint John Sheriff's contract.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, motion made by Justice Sidney, second by Justice Dinko. All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? You guys have it, so that's, in a manner of adjournment, X seven seventeen. I forgot my gambling app.